Good evening and welcome to the second open session. Today is Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is the meeting for the Kent County Public Schools Board of Education. The time is six thirty P. M. The first item on the agenda in this portion of the meeting is to report on closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members of this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, supervisor of human resources, Adam Constance, legal counsel, and Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, met in closed session under general provisions, Article three dash three zero five B, section one, was to discuss the appointment, employment and assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Section seven was to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. Section eight was to consult with staff, consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. This session was for information and discussion purposes only. No action was taken. Personnel actions will be voted upon by this board after the special request by the Chestertown Mayor and council. Portion of the agenda during the superintendent's report, section of the agenda this evening. The next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Wallace, would you? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, the administration is recommending approval of the minutes as presented from the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, open session meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Mr. Johnson has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Gail. As Ms. Gail is walking up, just a reminder, speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processed through available channels. If submitting written testimony, speakers are requested to provide a copy to the president. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the community to address their comments to the board. It is not an opportunity for dialogue. If you have questions that need an answer, please contact the superintendent or write a letter to the Board of Education and a response will be sent back to you. I will be setting the timer. You will hear beeps for three minutes. At thirty seconds, I will advise you when you have thirty seconds, and we will kindly ask you to finish up at three minutes exactly. The first person on the list is Lisa Ruth from Chestertown.
How are you?
Good evening.
The picture for the Maryland's education system is dismal, and the blueprint is designed to offer more expensive feel-good social programs than real solutions to the achievement deficit. So what is to be done? First, it's time that educators stop focusing on teaching subjects that are not only inappropriate for schools to teach, but also detrimental to children. Students need math, reading, science, history, not woke ideology, gender identity, or political theory. Academics are what schools are supposed to do. There are many other things that need to happen as well. Teacher unions and special interests have no business dictating what is taught in a public school system. Schools need to listen to parents and give them a say in what their children are taught. Schools need to get out of the medical and mental health business beyond basic referrals for those students who truly need them. Teachers and principals need to be put back in control of the student behavior in their classrooms and schools in order to create a safe environment in which to learn. Children who cannot follow school rules and who are a danger to others must face consequences along with strategies to help them better themselves. They cannot be allowed to keep others from learning. Those who can't change need alternative learning environments. Special education students must be given the service, services guaranteed to them under the law. During the last three years, many of these services have been deferred or in some cases denied. We need the hire, to hire the best teachers who are not only well-versed in content, but in teaching practices. It needs to be clear to them that they are not hired to share their personal lives, alternative lifestyles, or political opinions with our children. As Board of Education members, you need to focus on the academic performances of students in our schools and not on pandering to unions and special interest groups. It's the only way that students will give, gain, and skills the ability, sorry, will gain the skills and abilities to be successful adults who can support themselves and their families. The woke agenda and the constant focus on division by race, ethnicity, gender, economic status, and sexual preference in classrooms needs to end. The constant indoctrination of our children isn't moving them forward towards success. It is actually depriving them of a future at all, and it will eventually ruin them and this nation.
The next speaker is Brian Matthews.
I'm here representing Kent Forward. First, I'd like to say that as Kent Forward, we appreciate the time and effort that has gone into the process of working on the middle school project, and we also believe that Kent County should make the most of state resources when we have the rare opportunity to do it like we do right now. We also feel strongly that this facility should be in Chestertown for the following reasons. One, it's been stated that our students can and will thrive educationally no matter where this project is placed. Two, at the end of this process, the decision will be handed to our county commissioners, your decision, to our county commissioners, who will be expected to find a way to pay for it, and that will likely result in the largest bond ever floated in Kent County history. It seems quite possible that the commissioners may not be comfortable with the choice that they're handed and the costs incurred. Regardless of how committed they are to Kent County public schools, they may feel that the county budget cannot afford what you have chosen, especially considered, considering the double challenge of the Kerwin blueprint and the middle school construction at the same time. When asked during the election cycle how each of the candidates for commissioner planned to pay for the Kerwin blueprint and the new middle school, a consistent response was economic development versus raising taxes. It's not unreasonable to think that the location of this major investment can and should have a significant positive impact on the ability to help create this economic development that's needed to pay for it. It's also not a reach to say that Chestertown is Kent County's biggest and best opportunity for attracting businesses, residents, and growth, and would allow the new school to not only provide incredible education opportunities, but also economic development opportunities for the county and the town. Large construction projects are complex, however, they are not mysterious. With the will and by working together for true collaborative planning, Kent County can find a way to place this visible example-
Thirty seconds.
-of our commitment to education in Chestertown, where it belongs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mayor David Foster.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about the location and planning of our middle school, which will be really the largest investment in education, certainly in, in my lifetime in our county. And because of that importance, I'm pleased that the school board and the county commissioners will be making a very thorough examination of all possible options for that. At the recent learning sess, or listening session in Chestertown, we realized that for the first time that those options were limited just to the lands currently owned by the school board. And so I'm here really to encourage you to avail yourself of all potential sites, building sites in the area. I've brought with me a, a map of Chestertown and the surrounding areas, the current school site down here, but in and around Chestertown, there are other ample sites there, and we also have been told that there's plenty of precedent for land swaps if another site turns out to be more appropriate. And as we listened to the, again, at the, at the listening session there, there were a number of comments about, oh, well, that current site was too small, or the current site might have drainage problems that would cause extra expenditures, or the current site would handicap in terms of, of recreation opportunities, because while you can tear down the existing school and then build a new recreation site at where the previous school was, it would take time and it would inevitably result in lost opportunities. However, if you go to a new site, each of those disadvantages would be mitigated, if not removed altogether. So I really want you to avail yourselves of all possible opportunities, and also remember, God forbid, should there be an accident in the area, Chestertown has the best possible opportunities to mitigate that in terms of hospital, police, fire department, ambulance services. There's no other place in the county that has those kind of emergency services for the students. So I really ask you to, to widen your horizons, look outside the box a little bit, not limit yourself just to those sites that you have examined, but to examine the other sites available potentially. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilmember Megan Eflin.
Good evening, and thank you for the chance to speak in front of you. My name's Megan Eflin. I'm a member of the Chestertown Town Council, and on behalf of Chestertown, I want to express Chestertown's deep want for the middle school to remain in Chestertown. We feel like it's the best option for our county students. We've had a long partnership with the school being in the town. We worked on a grant together to redo the park that's related to that. That is something that is used after school, on the weekends, and in the evenings by numerous people in the community. There are rec league practices that are held there. There are education opportunities. University of Maryland Eastern Shore campus uses the outdoor education site. We'd also request that you would consider a feasibility study and partner with the town when considering the Chestertown location, whether it is, to Mr. Foster's point, that there are other opportunities or at the current location. We really want to partner with you and look at all the opportunities that are available and discuss zoning, whatever needs to be done to accommodate the school being in Chestertown. We'd also like you to consider the vast resources that exist in Chestertown. We have the YMCA, which will have its after-school programs up and running by the time that the school is rebuilt. We've also got the public library, which hosts a number of after-school students and programs, and there are a host of very excellent education program nonprofits that are offering after-school activities to student body. Garnett Elementary and the Kent County Middle School are a huge part of the lifeblood of Chestertown. They add to our community, and we'd like them to remain there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alicia Moxley.
I come to you as a parent of two kids in the school system, one graduated, very saddened, angered, and concerned. I've been hearing much on the news about our nation and how it's grooming our kids by pushing the transgender agenda and early sexualization of our kids from pre-K through high school. I naively thought our little community of Kent County would be safe from this, what I consider evil, at least for a little bit longer. Yet, as I speak, there's still books of, there are currently books available to our kids in our school libraries that contain sexually explicit pornographic material, including gay and heterosexual detailed sexual activity. These books promote sex at an early age, multiple partners, and if you're not happy with your gender in life, you can change what that with hormone drugs, surgical removal of your breasts and genitals become the gender of your choice. Do you realize the emotional health and safety ramifications to all of this? The impact of sex crimes, depression, anxiety, suicide, it's beyond scary. And as, as evidenced to you, I want to read from a book that is currently in our Kent County High School. It's called All Books, All Boys Aren't Blue. It's written by an LGBTQ activist, George Johnson, available for our kids' reading and sexual influence. And I really don't want to read this, but I'm going to. There you stood in front of me, fully erected, and said, taste it. As, at first, I laughed and refused, but then you said, come on, Matt, taste it. This is what boys like us do when we like each other. I finally listened to you. The whole time, I knew it was wrong, not because I was having sexual intercourse with the guy, but that you were my family man, member. I only did this for about forty-five seconds before you had me stop. Then you got down on your hands and knees and told me to close my eyes, and that's when you began oral sex on me as well. So is this what we want our kids to read? Is this what we want to teach our kids, or should we focus on academics, math, history, and English? Why should the schools have the right to teach and promote the idea of gender changes and our immature children whose brains and bodies have not even fully developed and have this inappropriate sexual content? I ask you, what are the school board members-
Thirty seconds.
-the teachers, librarians, and parents going to do to take a stand to fight against our children, or fight against this evil that is going towards our children? Thank you for hearing me, and I hope something is done in the future with this and these books are taken out.
Our next speaker is Valerie Walters.
I have requested additional minutes to speak on behalf of a group.
Public participation is three minutes long.
Okay, so then the two of us will speak, so it'll be six.
It's gonna be three minutes, and she'll have to sign up again and, and either take the time at this time or the second participation, which is at the end of the meeting.
Well, she'll sign up right now. She has the paper.
Thank you.
So I am speaking on behalf of Moms for Liberty Kent County. Previously, school systems and county governments were able to determine the budget for the schools and the items funded in the budget. Now, the blueprint puts the entire budget under the discretion of a State Accountability and Implementation Board, AIB, made up of appointed members who would arbitrate local education budgets and force both county councils and boards of ed to fund any programs demanded by the state school administration. The members are appointed by the governor, and guess who gets to make the nominations? The state teachers union. Guess who doesn't? The voters. The blueprint is one mandate after another for local systems, including everything from how much teachers are paid to how and what content will be taught. This could be the reason why school systems are suddenly streamlining county policies and putting the policy points into administrative regulations. For example, the discipline policy for a school system details how discipline will be carried out in the district. The policy is then voted on by the elected school board. This will change. Here is the difference between policies and regulations. A policy is a principle adopted by the board of ed to guide and develop the implementation of educational programs and/or the management of the school system. State law provides that a county board of ed with the advice of the superintendent determines the educational policies. An administrative regulation is not voted by the board. A regulation is a guidance and/or procedure issued by the superintendent regarding the implementation of board policies, and regulations do not require board approval or adoption. That last line is the most important. Without board approval or adoption means the body elected to run the schools is cut out of the process. Therefore, the citizens are also cut out of the process. One might wonder why this is important. With all the sexualization, indoctrination, racial division in the schools, as well as the trend to force parents out of the decision-making for their own children, these changes in the decision-making-
Thirty seconds.
...process will provide the foundation for the schools to implement whatever they want without approval or even knowledge of the public. As our local elected officials, voters would hope that you would have the integrity to fight back against a diversion from the intended purpose of schools teaching academics to a divisive, extreme agenda that has nothing to do with academic process or growth and actually steals time away from academic instruction. As test scores have shown, our children are being cheated out of the basic-
Ms. Walters, your time is up. Thank you.
...schools once promised. I'm just finishing my sentence.
I do have someone else who is in line before the next speaker. We have a council member from Chestertown. Mr. O'Brien, would you like to come up next, please? Thank you. Gail. Appreciate it. Please.
Yes, thank you. I'm here also just to reiterate that maybe- That, yes, that the school needs to be worked on and needs to be replaced. We are not disputing that. We have seen the plans, and we wanted to just reiterate that Chestertown government, our presence here, is signaling that we are willing to work and, and listen and also just offer solutions that would allow the Chestertown site to imbalance with the other positives and negatives of the other sites to be the preferred site. We just feel that the municipality has opportunities to offer the designers that might not be available at other sites, for example, combined or maybe shared off-site stormwater management, things that the town as a municipality can offer, and work with that to allow the site to be more accommodating for the design and the size that you feel is appropriate for a new school. I think it's already been said how Chestertown itself has valuable opportunities for children that are not allowed, not, basically not available out in Morton. I know for a fact, because I live down the street, that the quantity of walkers that are able to get to the middle school and back, that a lot of them are just latchkey kids that go home, a lot of them actually go to the library and use that as an after-school start, stop until their, their parents are safely home, then they can go home. The, the cost of budgeting for more buses and more time, just picking up my child today, I noticed that there's already, are already a pretty good traffic jam at the end of day of school, just with the high school, not necessarily if there's everybody going there wants to pick up. Just one of the things also, there is a very active network of volunteers in town that I, I have seen on a regular basis are there at the library tutoring after-school kids that are in need for free when these tutoring services, these are volunteer college kids, these are retirees. There's actually a vast network of volunteers that are tapped into quite frequently by kids who are struggling. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that the town has things that we can do. We would just like the opportunity to be able to discuss when you do a feasibility study that might not be considered initially, so thank you.
Ms.
To continue, many want to blame this decline, this decline on the COVID pandemic. If that is the case, then the schools should be focusing more on academics, but you are not. Instead, you are spending time on indoctrinating our children and implementing social and emotional learning strategies that have no positive impact on academic achievement, but instead serve to make children more dependent on pseudo-psychological strategies while instilling social and sexual agendas that are both inappropriate or harmful. Our, our children are being told to question the reality of their gender, our society, and their capabilities to overcome the barriers. They are being told to judge each other by skin color and ethnic background. Precious time in the classroom that should be spent on catching up with academic content that is lost. While teachers are busy teaching social justice and sexual ideology, the kids aren't learning math, reading, and science, but yet schools are continuing down this path. As we go forward, we need to not only question these practices, but strongly oppose them. As Board of Direct, as Board of Education members and school administrators, you need to know that we are here to impede and ultimately stop these agendas. We are here to promote teaching children the academic skills they need to be productive, fulfilled adults. Parents in our county demand transparency regarding instructional, instructional and Here is the difference between policies and regulations. Based on materials used in schools and made available to students. It's interesting that some are more willing to condemn groups like Moms for Liberty for wanting to protect innocent children by cleaning up some of the material allowed while at the- while at the same time, those same people banned books like To Kill a Mockingbird and various Dr. Seuss books. We are strongly against pornographic and racial literature in the classrooms and libraries of schools, especially when they expose our students to these damaging materials. Hard to imagine that anyone would think this is okay, but they do. And if you think I'm fear-mongering, you are dead wrong. The filth in our county schools is beyond appalling. It's criminal. Opponents of transparency and the teachers' union tell us we need to trust the teachers. They are the experts. As a comparison, think about this. The state of Maryland is getting ready to-
Time has expired. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Couch, the next portion is the report.
Mr. President, members of the board, I thought you would like to hear a little bit of information about the school-based health clinic that we have at Rock Hall Elementary School. There are sixty-seven students that are presently enrolled in the clinic. That's thirty-six percent of the student body. Seventy-three students have enrolled in the dental screening, which is about thirty-nine percent. In addition, Chop Tank Health has scheduled two COVID clinics. About thirty of our employees attended each of those clinics. And our next steps is, will be to open it up to the community, the limited community use, including staff and students from other schools. I know that some of you might be curious in terms of how that would be utilized in terms of during the school day. So we met with Chop Tank, and the procedure would be that the, that these would be existing patients that were already seen by Chop Tank Health, and they would present these patients to the school, and they would come either before the school day or after the school day. And if they came during the school day, the staff would meet them at the door and escort them in and then escort them out. It would be a very small percentage of the population that would be utilizing these services, but I know that the mayor in Rock Hall is excited about this opportunity because transportation is an issue with some of the elderly and some of the residents in Rock Hall. So this would provide them with another opportunity to provide, to provide health care to the families and students in Rock Hall. So that is an update on the Rock Hall School-Based Health Clinic. I also wanted to let you know that we've begun our learning walks, and they've, we've completed them at all five of our schools. A team of administrators, instructional coaches, and teachers, approximately eighteen staff in total, have been involved in these walks. The goal is to observe the teaching, learning process in the classrooms. The learning walks are intended to give a strong sense of current instructional practices, which will serve as qualitative data for the strengths and needs of the students and to effectively plan improvement efforts. The walkthroughs captured how well our staff are implementing the core programs, the Maryland Leads Grant, the use of the data in Edge Elastic, and analyze the current state of process monitoring in each of our schools. One of the things that's really been nice is that we begin the day with a presentation from the principal and the principal and their key staff. They talk about their data, their math and their English language arts data, and how those data have informed their intervention schedules. I think that it's been very impressive with the, with the students and the staff to see how that's been utilized in place in the schools. And then we've also been very impressed with the student support coaches in terms of how they've been utilized in the classroom. The evaluators go into the classroom, and they look for evidence to support school improvement goals. And before we leave the classroom, we leave a note for the teacher to, to provide some, some feedback on how they're doing, what they're doing well, and, and some just real-time support in terms of, because a lot of them are asking, well, what did the evaluators think? What did, what did they feel about coming to my classroom? So they get immediate feedback as we leave the room. In every elementary school, we've been able to get into every single classroom, and we debrief with the school staff and turn the visit into a final report that the principal gets, and we identify the strengths and weaknesses that were noted. The learning walks are highly structured, they're focused visits, and we, we really pretty much mirrored the same process that MSDU uses when they have their expert team reviews. So, so I think that that is important for us in terms of providing some feedback to our staff. In closing, I just want to share that my, share my admiration for our principals and their staff. It was evident they took the feedback. You know, we started the learning walks last year, and it was evident that they took the feedback that we provided to them last year, and they incorporated that into their classrooms this year so that they could improve student outcomes. I think that we were all also very impressed. We spent the day at Galena, and that's finalized our, our walks for the last two weeks that we've been having at our schools. But the, the meeting at, and the walk that we had at Galena today was really impressive in terms of seeing how energized the SSCs are in terms of working with the students. They've been trained in all of our interventions, they're providing that one-on-one, and to every, to, to the, to every teacher that we went in to visit, each one of them said it was so wonderful to have an extra set of hands to help them with meeting the needs of their students. And then I just wanted to end by saying the listening sessions for the middle school are complete. We've had approximately one hundred and fifty-three individuals that have completed the survey for the Kent County Middle School, which is, which is high. At one point, we only had like thirty, so now we're up to one hundred and fifty-three. Sixty-five percent of the participants were parents, eighteen percent are members of the community, and seventeen percent are staff members. So we plan to share the results at the next quarterly meeting that we, that will be held on November the twenty-ninth. So that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Couch. The next item on the agenda is the Golden Anchor Award. Mr. Husham.
Thank you, President Getz, school board members, Dr. Couch. Tonight, I am here to honor our November Golden Anchor Award winner. As a reminder, our Golden Anchor Award is, goes to an employee or any group of employees that exemplify the mission, vision, and, and core values of our school system. This month, we had seven nominations, and any parent, staff, or student can nominate. To join me in honoring this month's winners, I have our supervisor of special education, Dr. Keen.
Good evening. I'd like to honor two employees who went above and beyond their duties as educators and worked with a neighboring county to ensure that all of the hard work that had been done and the success of a student with a significant disability was continued when the student transferred into another district. I was contacted by the director of special education from that county praising these two employees and their dedication to students of Kent County. Both of these employees used the day that Kent County Public Schools staff were off and reported to that school the student had transferred to, to model to the new staff his behavior plan, strategies that worked, and communication techniques. Their desire to go above and beyond, to give of their personal time to ensure the continued success of this student needs to be acknowledged. Their dedication and love for students is apparent, and we're lucky to have such dedicated teachers in Kent County.
And without further ado, our winners are Jess Roboto and Alexandria Murphy. Jess could not be with us this evening, but Alex is here.
Come on, Dr. Keen. Congratulations. Thank you for coming. I'm just looking for a back here. Okay, the next item on the agenda is listed as special request, Chestertown mayor and council, and Dr. Couch, you are listed as the-
Yes. I received a letter from council and Mr. O'Brien, and he is here this evening to talk about that request. He was aware that we had playground equipment that was not being utilized at Wharton, and they have use for it at Chestertown. So I indicated that if he would like to talk to the council about that and the mayor, then presenting us with the letter would be the next step that he would need to follow in terms of moving forward with that request. And then they also had a, we also had a discussion about the kitchen at Wharton and how they could utilize or have access to a commercial kitchen with regard to the farmer's market. So he's here to make his case and for us to have a little bit of dialogue about that. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Couch and, and board. Yeah, this is just a very initial, this is just a very initial request to start the process. It just came to our attention that there was surplus playground equipment that is at the current Wharton Elementary School, the former one, not the larger playground equipment between the, the pool, but the very small yard, the small yard has some equipment.
Yeah, it was the pre-K. It's the pre-K.
The pre-K. I was made aware that that is potentially surplus and that no one has made a request to at least begin a conversation if that could be surplus to a municipality for, to put it back into use, essentially. We would have a great need for that and would help advance our, our program that we're developing for Pocket Parks. And it's just, and it's in great shape. There's nothing wrong with it. It would be great to put it back into service if that is within your consideration. The other one was just thinking aloud of the needs of Chestertonians, but it also applies to Chestertown, Kent County at large. We're in dire need of a commercial kitchen for people who are at the farmer's market, but also for other activities. There's been a change in a Maryland state law that now requires vendors who are like food trucks and other services, potentially food service providers, they now need a county base of operations. In the past, they could use commercial kitchens from wherever, but now the law, I believe, only requires them to have a county-specific base of operations. I believe that there is still an opportunity to potentially bring back that commercial kitchen that is, I guess, mothballed at the moment. I just wanted to have an opportunity to discuss, offer any opportunity for volunteers to maybe move or do anything that we can to assist maybe bringing that back. And just to let the board know that this is not, this is nothing new. There is precedent. I believe the board of ed has, has rented or leased surplus space to the rock-off fire department of their buildings. This is not an unusual request. I believe that those kinds of arrangements have been made in the past. So just wanted to ask for at least an approval to allow one of a designated person to begin this conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, why don't you stay there, and then we'll have a dialog, opportunity to have a dialogue. So any-
Wasn't there some of the kitchen equipment that was given to another facility?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, what am I thinking of there? I thought there was a refrigerator or freezer or something that was moved. Was that not at Wharton?
Was there anything out of Millington Elementary?
Mr. Wheeler, did we move anything out of Wharton?
No. No? Okay. So how would the lease or whatever, how would the arrangement work with an entity that wants to, because I know there are two other opportu, in the farmer's market. I know there's, there is one vendor who leases the commercial kitchen out of Betterton American Legion-
Right.
-and there's another vendor that leases the commercial kitchen out of Kent Center. So would this-
Would the town be the entity?
Yeah, how would this work? And would it be like anybody that wanted to lease it, or is it going to be first come, first served?
That would be the discussion. If it needed an umbrella group to have that and then provide it as a fee for other people. The idea is to have, I mean, the county can be involved as well. It's just to have an arrangement to, I have a list of at least five different groups that are wanting to pay for access to a commercial kitchen to have that certification and that base of operations. That can be arranged as long as you, you think, at least we can begin those discussions. Yeah, who covers insurance? What kind of things are, those details, I believe, can be negotiated or found a solution for as long as the, the facility can be brought up to health code to provide that service.
Yeah, I would be real curious to see, before we went down too far, to have the health department involved just to see where it stands from their specs. Otherwise, I mean, there, obviously, there's a lot of detail that would need to be worked out, but, but I mean, I, I think it's a great use of an empty space.
I do, too.
That's just my opinion. You know, so I think if we can get through that, that initial step of, yes, it is viable, yes, it will work, and then we start going down the details of what that looks like, I think would be, that's my opinion.
I know a number of people at the farmer's market also who use, like Trish was saying, who use other commercial kitchens, and, and having access to another space would hopefully be another opportunity for, for lots more people to be able to-
Especially since it's something that's not being used.
Right. Yeah.
That was exactly my thought, and it, like I said, they're, they're willing to, to rent, to, to make it viable and pay for itself. And if there's anything that the town or I'm willing to work with the county as well, I think it just hasn't been discussed in the past, so I'm hoping it's an option.
It's an interesting proposal.
I think, I think getting a, a health department person in there just to, to do a quick look around and see.
I was just asking for the, the approval of the board for the concept, and then we can take those next steps.
So what I would say is if, if the board is, if there's no disagreement with the board, then, you know, I could go ahead and work with either you or Mr. Ingersoll or both or whatever, and also include Mr. Wheeler and any other persons that we decide that needs to be involved, and then we can just start engaging in the conversation. I didn't want to move forward without board approval.
Yeah, I would just ask that if we pass that first hurdle-
Bring it back.
-once we get into the details, then, you know, who staffs it, who's, you know, school system building, you know, how does that look, you know, from an entry standpoint and what that looks like? But that's, that's detail. That's fine.
Okay.
With respect to the, the playground, that isn't necessarily reliant on the health department, per se. I guess I would just ask the board, I mean, I think if, if the equipment is there, personally, I would not have an issue with surplusing the playground, this space to be used. I think it's in Carpenter Park?
Carpenter Park or Washington Park.
Okay, whatever that-
It's the one we're currently working on, but-
Yeah.
-we have multiple spots that it could be used, and we would find a volunteer way to, to bring those at, you know, to repurpose it or to bring it offsite. We would find the funds to not try, have a, a cost to the board of ed for that if they're allowed, if you would approve a surplus.
What's at the park currently?
A lack of playground equipment.
So is it safe to say that the playground equipment that's there, is that, wasn't that, was that-
No, the, the current park, we're, actually, there is, we have a lack of playground equipment in Chestertown. There's a basketball court, there's a picnic area. We're actually installing, we're installing a playground in Carpenter Park, but it's going to be, we could, this would be a supplement in an elementary part. The other one we're doing is going to be a larger part. We have many places that it could be used to just in, make more playground space available quicker. And, you know, cost is what's preventing us from expanding it fast.
The, the, the most recent playground, luckily, just for the public knowledge, because I kind of know, but just interested in seeing what other projects you have, the parks committee has accomplished in putting in your playground equipment, or is this the only space that would have used playground equipment?
I, I understand your point, and I've actually, it is not, we've only accomplished one recent playground. We're revamping all playgrounds. It is not specifically, I only mentioned Carpenter Park because- It is not specifically, I only mentioned Carpenter Park because that is the current park we're working on. I actually, I, I am sensitive to the fact that we're not trying to put used equipment in a specific area of town or a specific park. I reviewed the equipment that's actually at the, at the elementary school, the former. It's in very good shape and it can be repainted and it's, it's completely up to code. It can be used at Gateway Park, it can be used at a different park. Like I said, we have several pocket parks under consideration that have no equipment at all. So we have many viable options, and I believe that, I mean, eventually we'll go through a planning process, but we want to put new equipment at Carpenter as well as Bailey. We have, we're developing a recreation plan, an aggressive one in town at the moment.
Ms. Sullivan, did you have a question?
No, and I think he kind of answered it. I thought that we had had an inquiry before about another playground set that was either at Millington or Wharton, and it was going to be... It was, um... Cost prohibitive to move.
Yeah, that's, you're speaking about the equipment at Millington?
Okay.
And, and that was before we surplus the building to the county. And the Millington, the town of Millington was going to move that playground equipment, which we did make the decision as a Board to let them do, and once they got in there to try to move it, it was cost prohibitive, and they felt that they would actually break pieces of the equipment before they could actually move it. So I was just hoping that's not going to be the case here.
I hope that's not the case as well. I did review the equipment, it's still in very good shape. It's, because it's for elementary kids, it's actually of a smaller size...
Yeah.
And it can be dismantled. Some of the larger sets, I agree, would probably be cost prohibitive. But again, this was also just to start the conversation. I believe we can get volunteers to also offset some of that cost. Ultimately, it can, if you approve it, it can still be determined that the equipment is not able to be moved for some reason, but I, we still have to have your approval to even start that process.
And one of the things is, what he's referring to is the pre-K equipment is not nearly as extensive as the other equipment that's between the community center and Wharton. So it's might, it perhaps might be more in a, more of a, an easier sell, if you will.
Now, you've said that the equipment looked like it was in good shape and all that. Would we feel better if we got some sort of waiver from liability if for some reason the equipment wasn't as perfect and a kid falls and, you know, who's, who's going to be responsible for that? The situation in, in Millington was that there was some equipment for, for older children, and it was, in this particular case, it was a, the school had had a big fundraiser and they bought that equipment brand-new in memory of a, of a student who had passed away up there. And although some volunteers from Millington had, had really good intentions, when they went in to remove it, they didn't do it the right way, and it, like, tried to saw, I'm going to, you know, saw it off like at ground level, and it actually ended up destroying it, and they couldn't move it. So just that, some sort of liability, if we need to be released from liability and just, just a forewarning to be really careful as you do it so that it does, you are able to move it.
If, if, if the Board approves and that, I will look into that and I will give you an assessment...
Mr. Constance looks like he's ready.
Of the options prior to, prior to actually taking any action, if that's...
Does our attorney have something he wants to contribute to that?
I'll just say that's, you know, because there are... To look into, and it sounds like there's been press reports, and I'm sure we're following the right process.
So just another point of clarification, the picture that's on the screen is the larger set. There is a second, smaller set. Okay, I just wanted to be clear that it was two.
That's it.
Yeah. Okay, great.
It's the same set, it's the two to five-year-olds.
Yeah, I'm just...
Part of the side of the building, right?
Yeah, but it just, I just wanted to be clear.
It's there on the other side of the depot.
Part of whatever the process should be is if, if it is begun to be removed and cannot be removed, that somehow it is put back into a safe way so that it's now not this broken, derelict...
Because the stuff, because the stuff, the equipment at Millington ultimately was basically abandoned.
Right.
It's still there now.
Okay, I would definitely make sure that, well, one, that's, it wouldn't work that way, but I would make sure that our agreement was covered something like that, that, that would not be done. And I believe that these are the size that are much more manageable, that that probably would not be an option, that would not be a possibility, and that would not be, obviously, what we're trying to do, we're trying to salvage and make it work and put it back into use, so.
So as a Board, we have direction that we are in agreement with the kitchen and have follow-up. Is there any opposition? I know we're not voting formally, but to start the process, to go down this path with the playground?
Does Mr. Wheeler have anything he feels strongly about, about having the kitchen available to the community? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
It's gonna be fun.
Okay.
And Dr. Couch has already spoken to me about that. We don't have any problem sharing our space. We currently share it with different people from the school system now, so we don't know.
Great, thank you.
Are we all in agreement to move forward with both? Excellent. Thank you very much.
So I think next steps is I will get with Mr. Constance to see if we can come up with some kind of agreement with regard to moving forward with the playground. So is the sense that once we get that in place, then we can move forward with the playground? And then we'll start a discussion group, if you will, to start exploring the possibility of the kitchen, and then that will be brought back.
Okay, so that's what I was asking, can we just have a follow-up afterwards? I know you would do that anyway, but just an update so that we can...
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is personnel actions. Mr. Hushen, I believe this is your area.
Thank you. President Getz, School Board members, Dr. Couch, each month the Board receives a report of stated personnel actions that are discussed in closed session. Those actions are then voted upon during the open session. The administration recommends approval of those stated personnel actions.
As Mr. Hushen just noted, the administration is recommending approval of these stated personnel actions. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the personnel actions.
Mr. Johnson has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Sullivan has the second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hushen.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is reports. Kent County Teachers Association?
They're not here.
Okay, we'll move right into Board discussion. Mr. Wallace, if you may.
Good afternoon. Garnet Elementary will have Grandparent Monday, November 14th at 6:00 p.m. And on Thursday, November 17th, they'll have the ELL Resource Night at 5:30 p.m. Galena would like to share that this week they will be celebrating American Education Week. Today, they had Dr. Recess present in assembly and teach their staff and students game at recess. On Tuesday, they will be having an award ceremony to celebrate their students' academic and character achievements, and on Friday, they will culminate their week with Student Appreciation Day, a day full of learning and fun for their students. And KCHS, November 15th, winter sports season will begin. Also, November 14th at 6:00 p.m., the KCH Fall Sports Award Banquet will be held. November 17th at 7:00 p.m., KCHS Romeo and Juliet Drama Production. November 19th, Wrestling at Mardella at 10 o'clock. And November 19th, Basketball Scrimmage at St. George's Tech, Tech at 1 o'clock. And that is all.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, appreciate that. Dr. Constance?
I have not much to report, except that today I attended my last MAE legislative committee meeting, and I think that's a really, really important that somebody from this county continue to be represented on that, on that committee. I think they try to get somebody from every county, and it's always a well-run meeting, you learn a lot, so it's, it's a good experience, and, and it's good for us to have someone on there.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, great. Ms. Sullivan?
I wanted to first congratulate Ms. McGee for her win on the Board and to say how much I look forward to working, continuing our work together on the Board. I'm sad that Naveek will not be with us next year, but I know that you're going to contribute to the youth of Kent County in many ways, and I can't wait to see what you do next. The count has not been finalized, as everyone knows, so I'm going to hold off on making any other congratulatory remarks until those are official. Wendy, we'll miss you also next year, but I know that we'll be in touch. I was able to attend the Spanish Honor Society induction at the high school last month and want to congratulate the five new members. The Honor Society recognizes high achievement in Spanish and Portuguese by students of secondary schools. And tomorrow, I've been invited to be a guest speaker at Rock Hall Elementary School, and this is my second year participating, and I'm really looking forward to spending time with the students and teachers of Rock Hall. The Citizens Advisory Committee is taking a break over the holidays, but will reconvene in January, and I'll let the Board know, or Trish will let the Board know, once a date has been decided. And as Brayden mentioned, on the 17th, this Thursday, there's a lot of stuff going on this Thursday, 7:00 p.m. at the high school is Romeo and Juliet. I hope everybody can go and see it. And also, Thursday at 5:30, KCMS is having their PTA meeting via Zoom, so you can still, if you're at the middle school, have the PTA meeting and then still be able to go and see Romeo and Juliet. And I just want to quote something here from the National Coalition Against Censorship. "These books may not be of interest for every student, but if every library book was required to serve every student, the shelves would be bare. A library, including a school library, is meant to include a broad selection of books that provide values to students. These books do just that." I believe that representation matters. I believe that students should read and hear stories that reflect themselves, their families, their struggles and their achievements. I also believe that there are any number of ways that parents can and should be involved in our schools, and I believe that parents need to respect boundaries and not try to dictate curriculum and reading materials for our schools. Thank you.
Ms. McGee?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. I have some questions for Dr. Couch, just some things that we discussed at last month's meeting. So I know that the late bus is on the agenda as an item, so I'll skip over that. What's the status of safety measures for the buses and students at Galena Elementary School?
You mean for the lights, the flashing lights? We're still waiting, I don't know, have you heard anything, Mr. Wheeler? We're still waiting to hear that.
Okay. Also, last month, there was a mention of the number of support coaches that we've hired, and there were, there were still a few to be hired. Where are we on that?
We're still waiting to hire a few others for the secondary schools, is that correct?
So we hired three additions last week, so we still have those kids.
Yeah, okay. And I was just thinking about the agenda, and I see Mr. Fithian in the audience tonight, and we're getting ready to have a, a new slate of county commissioners, so I wondered if at least we should start including a spot on the agenda for the county commissioners to maybe come and make a report or ask us questions. We used to have it, but we haven't for a while, and especially since there are some big issues that are coming down the pike that will definitely require their input, their collaboration. And also, I just think it's important in general for people to hear firsthand, I mean, I think the best way to learn of what's said or done at a school board meeting is to be at that school board meeting and not refer, rely on somebody else's interpretation of what may have been said or what may not be said. So I would like to just offer an invitation again for the county commissioners or all three of them or one of their designees, or they could take a rotating basis just to, to let them know that they're welcome to be a part of this, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, President Getz. Just a couple of things. I was able to attend our homecoming. I thought it was, as cold as it was, it was a, a good game, a great win for our students. So it's always good, you know, on your homecoming to, to defeat the opponent in the game, so I thought that was great, and congratulations to those who were our homecoming court, and I heard the dance was successful. When again, I think, I attended the Caucus of African-American Leaders of the Eastern Shore, where we, was the first inaugural gathering filled with the folks from Cecil County all the way down to Worcester County. That evening, we heard from, I want to say Carl Snowden, a civil rights activist from Annapolis, Maryland, and his work just inspiring the community to continue to do. Each county nominated somebody from their county to be recognized for their, their accomplishments. I cannot recall, Marcelina Beck was our nominee for Kent County, you know, she served in our Chesterton Department and the Kent County Sheriff's Office as well. So that was a good honor to be there as well. I have, most recently, been going back to a presentation that we heard at MAE, and I'm, and one of the things that I have been going back to is our, our concentration of poverty areas. I just would hope that, you know, looking at that presentation that the state superintendent did, if maybe, if not before I get off the Board, but if before, at the next, when the new Board gets on, just to elevate that presentation again, I think it's important to see, you know, that we do have some, we know this, but to really see it and map and make process of that data, and, you know, we have that little pocket here in Rock Hall, the pocket in Chestertown, and then the pocket up in our northern part of the county. I think it would be, it would help to elevate, you know, those issues, as speaking with, you know, a lot of stakeholders, that they don't necessarily know that, that we have these, these pockets of concentration of poverty. I think it's, it's going to be really important as we go through, and it would help elevate some of the work that we're doing with our community schools, help elevate the need for, you know, being more community-focused and more wrapped around, and, and I think that would help us, you know, a tremendous bit in this county just to hear that presentation. And that presentation is available online as well, so making that accessible. I think I always go back to the, the last part is our, our school safety and want to be sure that we are still up to par with our drills. Our, I'm looking at Mr. our director back there, making sure we're up to par with our drills and our, our, you know, went to the MAE conference, and another concern was mine is making sure that our two-way communication systems are all working and up to, I think it's going, it's a, it's a big deal as we see. I will take, for example, I had a, a situation recently where a, a weapon was brought into a space that I was in, you didn't know what was in there until 10 o'clock later that night. I'm not saying that's here in Kent County, but I'm saying that it's going on, and, you know, TikTok, as much as we, we want to, you know, ignore it, it, it has prevalence in students' lives, and that's where they got it from. So, you know, these types of things, I just want to make sure we're all on par with that and making sure that we're teaching our students and our children what it means to make sense of being safe online, and those things are coming down the pipe as well, so continuing to elevate that, that role in our, in our county schools. Ms. Sullivan, I do thank you for your, your words and look forward to our last couple of Board meetings together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Chestertown Mayor and Council members for coming out tonight to speak about the middle school. I know it's a, it's a hot topic and continues, and certainly there's a lot of work still to be done, so thank you for coming out tonight, we really appreciate it. I would also like to congratulate Commissioner Fithian for his, his election win as well as others. I know, as Ms. Sullivan mentioned, we still have a few days until the vote is finalized for Board of Ed, so I will hold off my welcomes and my goodbyes for the, not the very next meeting, but the meeting after that. So I will say, it's not easy to put yourself out to be judged by your peers in the community, and my hats are off to all the candidates who put their names out there. It's very, very hard and unpredictable, so, you know, hats off there. And just on the schools, we've heard about at least 11 different events happening, there's probably three times that much. So I would encourage the public to attend when you can. You know, staff, teachers, administrators, everyone's really busy, so I know it's going to get busier with, with the holidays, once we get past Thanksgiving into the holiday season with Christmas, but just, great job. You know, we're starting to ramp up, and hopefully the holidays, you'll have some time to breathe, so thank you all for that. And that's my report. And that's my report.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda, a portion is education services. The next item is KCHS overnight band trip.
Good evening, President Getz, Dr. Couch, and board members. I'm Chris Hempstead, our principal of Kent County High School. The KCHS administration is here this evening, or I'm here this evening, to present information and obtain approval for a Kent County High School band and chorus student overnight stay to perform at the World Strides National Music Festival in Atlanta, Georgia this year, on April 21st through the 22nd, 2023. It's a festival that they have gone to previously. The location changes, so this year, it's in Atlanta, Georgia. The KCHS marching concert and jazz band will be performing in the festival, as well as the show choir. There will be approximately 36 students and 10 chaperones. All students are expected to maintain academic eligibility and be in good standing at Kent County High School in order to attend this event. The group would leave Kent County High on Wednesday, April 19th, around 10:00 PM, and return to Kent County High School around 6:00 PM on Sunday, April 23rd, 2023. The cost per student would be around $350, with our chaperones being slightly higher. That payment cost would include the hotel room, a tour of Atlanta, Georgia, a tour of Georgia Tech University, admission to Six Flags over Atlanta, and festival costs. So it's a great festival. Students are able to tour the area that they're in, and they always come back with many, many stories. The music boosters and the band transportation account will cover all the transportation costs. The students will be responsible for meals and incidental costs. So I'm here this evening just to present that information and to obtain approval for our band to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Hempstead. The administration is recommending approval of the overnight field trip to the World Strides National Music Festival in Atlanta, Georgia, from April 19th through the 23rd, 2023. Looking for a motion to approve.
I make a motion that our band and music students attend that, the trip. I know that every year, they represent us very well. They usually come home with a lot of trophies, not only for their musicianship, but also actually for their behavior and how they represent us. And it's a rare opportunity, I think, for our kids to, I wish they could take more field trips. So I make a motion that we approve the overnight field trip.
Ms. McGee has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second it.
We have a second by Dr. Costa. Any further conversation, comments, questions?
Are the boosters doing a fundraiser at all to help raise?
They have been fundraising, yes.
Thank you.
I just had a question. I know we do this every year, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to this. What is, and I think this is a question, you know, I kind of know the answer to, but I just want to make sure. What requirements are there of chaperones to attend these, to attend, you know, what kind of training? Again, we're thinking about safety and these types of deals.
Yeah, it comes through the, through the boosters, but they also have to sign up through the volunteer application, and they go through a training that we provide at the high school.
Okay, thank you.
We have different levels. There's a level one, two, and three. So yes, an overnight field trip would be that they would have to go to the training.
The same kind of vetting, I would assume that the FFA chaperones and everybody else does.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hempstead.
Perfect, thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the KCHS late bus discussion. Mr. Wheeler?
Good evening, President Getz, Dr. Couch, board members. I'm here this evening to bring before you, to provide information on the Kent County High School late runs. Transportation Department has created three after-school bus runs to serve the students that are involved in extracurricular activities at Kent County High School. The Transportation Department will work with the administration of Kent County High School to identify procedures for the late run buses. So if you look, attached is the cost of what the late run buses would cost us for each area. So what we did was we broke it down into three areas, the northern end of the county, the Chestertown area, and the Rock Hall area. At the top, can you scroll down a little bit? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Have to go to the top, please. All right, so the top, so what we used was the top of the scale for our drivers, and we wanted to put in, we wanted to make this as realistic as possible. So we wanted to put in like, if there was an increase, hoping there's an increase this school year for our drivers. And so that rate there, that 2412, times an hour and a half for the late run, and that 3618, that hourly salary you see there, is the overtime, time and a half, that it would put some of the drivers in if they were to do the after-school programs. So we wanted to make this as realistic as possible, so you guys could have some figures. All right, so if we scroll down, late run one, that's the southern end of the county, the Rock Hall area here, that late run is going to be about 43 miles per day, an hour and a half. If you time that by estimated 170 days, we have 180 school days, but we're just saying the late run may run 170 days due to inclement weather, due to half-days, you know, different things that would occur, counseling late run because of different activities at school. So we estimated about 170 days, so that would cost us about $21,000. That first late run in the southern area, it'll hit, all late runs do not, we're not doing door-to-door, so I want to make that clear to everyone. We're not doing door-to-door service for late runs, there are drops in the communities. All the late run stops haven't been outlined, but the runs have been designed. So, for example, the Rock Hall late run, which started Kent County High School, could drop kids off in the Buckneck area, Chesapeake Landing, it would go down to, it would just follow that route down 20, could drop kids off in those different neighborhoods, and come down here to Rock Hall and drop off in neighborhoods of Rock Hall as well. And that estimate, like I said, would be about $21,739.60. That's the first late run. Second late run, that is in the center of the county, the Chestertown area, and of course, it's going to be about 38 miles, 38 miles per day, an hour and a half. And the fuel that you see here, the 93 cents is the maintenance, the 77 cents is the fuel. And we put that on today's fuel rates right now, because who knows what fuel is going to do? It could rise, it could go down, so we wanted to give you the worst-case scenarios. That run is going to cost us about $119 a day, times 170 days, estimated cost is about $20,000. Third late run is on the northern end of the county, and of course, it's going to yield the most miles because it's going to go the furthest, because you're up in Galena, Massey, Millington, in those areas. Dropping students off, that's going to be about two hours per day, 54 miles, 54 miles per day, 170 days, so you're talking $164 per day, a cost of about $27,993, which gives us a total of $70,000 a year that it would cost us to run the late runs.
So, Mr. Wheeler, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So if we were, I mean, I know there's a conversation about funding, so just.
Yes, sir.
Let's parking lot that for a second. So if we end up going into a space where we figure out the funding, and with, is your, first question, is your intention to use existing bus drivers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, in your mind, because I see, I see there's opportunity here for engagement, right? So kids have opportunities, you know, they're able to, all of the things that we've talked about, participation, sports, et cetera, it opens up so much, right?
Yes, sir.
My question is, if we were to find a way to get there, make the decision that we're going to do this, how long would the onboarding take to have the routes from the moment we decide to, they are running?
It wouldn't take long at all. So wait a minute, let me back up a little bit. So you're talking about doing this this school year? That's my question.
I haven't gone there. I'm asking, I'm asking about.
I'm thinking, look, I'm protecting, I'm thinking next year, but if you're thinking this school year, you're, you give me about, give me about two weeks.
That's what I'm asking, because I'm not there yet, because I know the summer to prepare it and all that, and it kind of weaves into the beginning of next year. Got that. But, you know, if it's something.
But we have the, we have the routes outlined.
Yeah, no, I know, I heard you when you said, all I'm saying is that when, you know, if we were to make a decision, you know, it would be, it would be great for us, as you've just mentioned, two weeks.
Yes.
Give or take.
Yes, I need, I need time to advertise.
Absolutely. But that's what I was looking for.
And drivers to commit.
Like, what would that look like? Knowing that it could be delayed for multiple reasons, but just that, that's the answer I was looking for, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Would it be possible, I'm going to throw a wrench in the whole thing for you now, I apologize. Would it be possible to do a single run late bus from the middle school to the high school, so any middle school kids that stayed after could catch those routes from the high school?
Okay. And my question is, I think there's a separate pot of money for, for late run for middle school.
Okay.
So middle school kind of has their own, well, they've had in the past, their own program. Me personally, I would want to keep the middle school, just for late run, I want to keep the middle school and high school separated, because we're just, this is a trial run, we're just trying this out.
Okay. And then, how late would the late bus be available at the high school?
So we were thinking 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM.
And we haven't worked, I haven't worked out the logistics, of course, with Kent County High School, but I'm thinking 5:00 PM.
And then, would there be some sort of separate student eligibility? It couldn't just be a kid stayed after school until 5:00?
So, so I put in here extracurricular, like I said, once, we haven't really worked out all the details. My personal feeling, it would be, you know, kids who are staying out of school for extracurricular activities.
Okay.
If you're staying to get extra homework, help, if you're staying to get, if you're staying for sports, of course, if you're staying for some type of activity or club, and you're with a teacher, then that's what the late bus is for. It's not for someone to go walk to Dollar General and come back to school and say, hey, let me hop, let me hop on the bus for a ride home.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
And like I said, that's a discussion that Transportation and Ms. Hempstead will work out.
That's what I was going to say, too, because that also sounds like you need in-school staff and not just drivers to kind of coordinate all of that effort as well, so.
And we had, when I first come into county, we had late run, and there were late run passes, giving the kids, you know, each season had a different color, color pass, and these are things that, like I said, we'll talk about and put into play. It seems like if we're, if we're moving forward with this, I got to move a little faster.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Johnson and I are both thinking, I'd like it to be for this school year, and the timing is kind of.
So now let's come out of the parking lot and talk about.
Yeah, kind of, kind of good, in the sense that we're just getting ready to start our winter practices tomorrow, and games won't start for a couple of weeks. But one of my questions is, is the anticip, I got my fingers crossed that we're going to have enough drivers, because isn't that kind of what?
But you're only talking three runs.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I know from my own experience, this fall on a sports team, sometimes only one sports team could make a trip on a day because the scarcity of drivers. That's what I'm just.
But all your athletics hasn't been covered.
Okay, yeah, I know, I just, so if we could, if we could find the money and work out all those other little details, I'm looking at Mrs. Hempstead, because this worked when you were in school. So we know that it's possible, and if we could find the money, I would like us to be able to do it this school year.
Okay.
I agree.
And to answer all the other hoops we got to hurdle, you know, jump through, I get that, so.
So it might, it might take a little bit of time for some planning, but.
Yeah.
What is our, I guess that takes us to taking the finance out of the parking lot, what does that, what does that mean for us? I mean, financially. And here's my thinking, you know, we, we make everything else work, you know, I think we can make this work. And I think we have a strong case if we come up short, the board will have a strong case if they come up short and they can't, and we don't have enough money in the fund balance or whatever, to say to our county commissioners or whomever that, you know, we, we took on this, you know, this ticket items to support this.
Would we only need to come up with a portion of that $70,000 for this year?
We'd have to look at how many days we have left.
Don't we be happy?
How many days we have left in a year?
We've got two seasons to go through.
Forty thousand, something, maybe 50,000? Would it also be possible, because I just went to the most recent booster club meeting, and there's money that the booster club hasn't spent. I'm wondering if it would be possible to at least, a small commitment from them to help with this, too.
Well, I think, for now, if this is something that you'd like for us to pursue, then the next item would be to look at where we are with the budget, and then we would have to approve, make a budget adjustment amendment, so that you could approve that, and that would have to come to the next board meeting.
So not the November 29th, but the December meeting?
Yeah. Our, as you recall, our finance director is on medical leave right now.
Well, you know, I would like to see us go forward with it, and I guess the caveat of it is making sure that we can, now that we have it, you know, people actually feel it. This has been a request time and time again, way before I got on the board, and so this is the plea for the public. We have this resource now, hopefully students and parents will utilize the resource, and, you know, with the support from after-school and getting students re-enrolled back into some of our programs, so we can build our sports program back up.
And all of our after-school programs, so it wouldn't just be for athletics, but all of our, any after-school programs that we had talked about.
I would also just caution that, you know, we may not be able to turn the faucet on, and the water is going to come out full force. We're going to have to have some patience, and know that parents, families, kids are going to have to adjust and see what's going. So, you know, it may be that it may not be operating, or it looks like there's two kids on a bus, or whatever it may be, with the, with the hope that beginning of next year.
We'll fill it out.
Yeah, it fills out.
And also, from just like a student perspective, the students are talking about this a lot. They're, we've, I've talked about it with just different students every week, about people asking me about the late bus, because they hear about it. So I think if it is possible to have it done this year, that would be the best for the students. But I understand totally with the financials and stuff, I'm not, you know, I don't really know much about that. But just from the student perspective, it's really wanted, so I just wanted to add that.
Yeah. I think it's several things we need to get with Ms. Hempstead to work out the logistics on coverage at the high school, in terms of making sure that students, as you said, are not just going, staying after school to go to the Dollar General and then getting on the bus. So I know one of the things that we talked about is giving the students passes, like if they're staying for tutoring, they're staying for after, or night school, afternoon and night school, then they would get a pass from their, from their instructor at that particular program. If they were with an extracurricular club, then they would get a pass. And so everybody would know that they had the pass, and that's what gave them the right to be on the bus. And so that's how you kind of control it.
I also remember, back in the day, with the adult part, coaches took turns being responsible for having late bus duty, to make sure that the kids who were supposed to get on the buses got on, and to make sure there wasn't anybody left behind, kind of thing. It's, it's not that much of a commitment from a coach. It's not that, it's, it's a whole lot better than the situation Mr. Yanikis portrayed last month, when he was sitting, waiting for an hour for a kid to get picked up, so.
So this is not an action item, it was for discussion only, but it appears as if we're asking for some, for some follow-up?
Yep.
And if we could have that ready for us for the December meeting, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. So for the December meeting?
Yes.
You want actual routes? You want, what would you like for the December meeting?
Financial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the first step.
And then, talking with Ms. Hempstead in terms of the logistics on how it would be staffed.
That would be great.
And then, from your end, Mr. Wheeler, the routes.
And the driver.
And drivers.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is policy KBA volunteer. Mr. Hushen.
Thank you, President Getz, school board members, Dr. Couch. Tonight, I bring forward, for the first reading, a new volunteer policy. This is for information only. With the increased number of volunteers that we have in our schools, and, you know, the anticipated increase that we will have, it is important that we, you know, review what the recruitment process, the onboarding process, and what the direction and the function of volunteers in all of our schools. As you know, with the. As you know, with the LEEDS grant, we have been able to hire a, another specialist in HR, who, you know, one of their primary roles is to serve as the volunteer coordinator, and, you know, as I alluded to earlier, with like the LEEDS grant, with our, with the different partnerships that many of our schools are pursuing and are already have, the number of volunteers has increased drastically, which is a good thing, but with the commitment that the school board, our administration, and our staff have made to school safety, this policy just outlines, you know, what the process is, you know, what is the rationale behind this, and I will pull this up here in a second, just bear with me. All right. All right, as we're waiting for it to load, you will see that the role of a school volunteer is defined, that the opportunities shall be based on the needs of each school, and, you know, shall include, but certainly not limited to, assisting in a classroom, media center, cafeteria, computer lab, office, on the playground, chaperoning of field trips, mentoring, tutoring, or other designated duties. We have a, a, a system where volunteers are classified into a certain tier, which we just heard Mrs. Hempstead speak about, we will have an update to that system in our next agenda item, and in conjunction with the school principal and human resources, we will determine, you know, what the tier status of each volunteer is, and then, as you'll see, item E just outlines what our implementation process would look like, and I would also just like to note before I answer some questions, that the entire process will be clearly outlined, essentially step for step, in a updated procedure.
That's to follow.
Yes.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, I have had a number of people in the community reach out to me about wanting to volunteer in our schools, I know I've spoken to you about this before, so I know that we have, and Mayor Foster is actually one of, one of the folks, so I know that we do have a number of applications maybe that are sort of in the hopper, that have been waiting for processing, how long do you think from this point before we would be able to process volunteers to be in our schools?
I can tell you that we have processed a number of volunteers within the last two weeks.
Okay.
The speed of the processing really depends on what tier status they fall under.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm, I'm so happy that we're finally getting more, an effective volunteer program, I, I think it'll make a big difference for us, especially, and I think when you have community members volunteering in the schools, they're more likely to support, you know, the schools and be happy to pay for them when they see what's really going on in schools, so this is really a welcome change.
Awesome. Any additional questions?
Oh, the volunteer application is not currently on the website, will it be on?
It is on there now.
It is on the website now? Okay, great.
So, that's gonna, I'll, we'll touch on that in our next agenda item as well.
Okay, that item was for information only, we will go ahead and move on to the next item, which is procedure 400-29 volunteer, Mr. Hushin.
And while Mr. Port gets me set up, I would just like to highlight that in the past, the volunteer procedure has existed under the instructional department, and with this update, we will be moving this procedure over to HR under personnel, which you will see, I, I have highlighted that change from 600-60 to 400-29. Again, this is just to, you know, elaborate on what was just outlined in the policy, in more specific detail.
Mr. Hushin, before you move, I don't mean to cut you off, but...
Sure.
Everything I'm looking at, and maybe you can explain to me, where the, where would I find the, the former personnel procedure at?
This is it.
Okay.
This is it, and what you will see, Mr. Johnson, and, you know, that's a, a great segue, the first paragraph that you see, that is currently at the top, where it says, volunteers work under the direction of the principal, that was what our former procedure was, so we have updated that in much, much more detail, you will see that we outline what the tier process looks like, under the old system, we had three tiers, which, tier three, which the perfect example is the overnight volunteers, were the ones who went through the full-on fingerprinting background check, we are now combining tier two with tier three, which, you know, includes your, your classroom assistants working directly with students, our, our coaches, our mentors, our tutors, and I'll just, you know, I jumped a little ahead there, and then we have our tier one volunteers, who go through the state sex offender registry, and, you know, examples of, of this are, are, you know, folks who come in for, and help with a class party, or go on a, you know, a, a short field trip, or, or in our schools, you know, helping, you know, set up the staff lounge on, you know, staff appreciation days, or chaperoning a dance, so the big change, well, obviously there's a lot of details that we've included here, but I will, I will note that the tier status, combining two and three, is a big change that you will note in the application. We're just highlighting that, you know, all volunteer applications, you know, although they have to go through the individual school, and will be signed off by the school principal with a statement of intent by the school volunteer, all of these applications will be housed in HR. There also will be a fingerprint charge that is assessed, just due to the amount of volunteers that we have, and the cost for anybody in our school system, whether they are a support staff, part-time employee, or teacher, coach, et cetera, has to pay 3125 to have that background check complete.
Is that a one-time thing, or do they have to do it every year?
Yeah, it is a, it is a one-time thing, unless they separate from us for more than one year, then we would have, have to bring them back. We've just, you know, outlined what the volunteer responsibilities are, I will not list, you know, or, or state, you know, each and every one, but you can see, these are all added, you know, just defining what the role is, outlining security procedures, outlining the insurance coverage, including workers' compensation, and a confidentiality agreement, which has already existed, we're just noting it through this procedure that I have attached here, that requires a signature, and we also have attached on the board docs, a, are an updated application that I will pull up here shortly.
Can you explain to me, I'm sorry, can you explain to me in the confidentiality statement where it says, do not share information that you see in person or electronic format, more especially the teacher methods, what does that mean?
Hang on, I was, I was pulling this back up as I was... Were you in the...
I'm on the one above it.
First paragraph?
Not, not on the agreement, they're in the procedure, right there, yeah.
As a volunteer for, do not share information that you see in person or electronic format or here in schools, including but not limited to student grades, classwork behavior, home environment, inclusion in free, produced lunch programs, enrollment in special, or, or, or teacher methods, so the, I can see where, you know, there, you would raise some question about this, but it's the, 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 the approach, the instructional practices that the educator is implementing.
So if the educator is implementing a good practice, we shouldn't share it? That's what that sounds like, when you think about it, so I'm just, I, I think, I know what, I know the, the nature of it, but I just caution us to, to use that type of language, because if somebody's sharing, I can understand student grades, I can understand classwork beha, I really can, but teacher methods is, I, it, it, I think, it kinda goes, it's a touch and go, and I, I don't know, sometimes, we want people to see what our, what our teachers are doing, especially if they're doing something great, and we wanna share that, but also, we don't want people thinking they're coming in to watch the class either, so I, I just caution us to use that type of language.
Okay, I will certainly note that, Mr. Johnson.
Is there any objection to removing that from the confidentiality?
We should remove it.
Okay, so, second reading, let's take that off.
Okay, this was for information only, but I, I will certainly bring it back.
Well, I know, but when you bring it back the second time.
Any additional questions?
I just didn't have a chance to show the updated application, Mr. Getz, I'm sorry.
It was for information, I mean, has the, would the board like to see that? We've had it.
No, it just actually got uploaded today.
Okay, okay.
Yep, so, what, what we've done is we took the, the existing application and have just modified some language, but I do see that Wharton and Millington need to be taken off, I just wanna draw your attention also to the statement for, of purpose, and that will have a direct sign off by the school principal, the school principal needs to be aware, you know, why volunteers are inside their building.
Good.
So let me, let me just ask a question real quick.
Sure.
So we have a volunteer that wants to volunteer services, but the principal has deemed those services not usable, because this policy or these, this will now land in HR, is that your responsibility to talk to the volunteer prospect, or is that the...
I work in conjunction with the school principal, but if it is, if it is work in that, in that building, that message should come from that school principal, and that's why there's this sign-off essentially.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to discourage, but I, I'm wondering where the principal is, if they're in a place that at this moment today, that's not, those services aren't necessarily needed, but it could be in January, who manages that communication, you just clarified that, so thank you, appreciate that.
Just, just to follow up, so say we, we do get an access to volunteers that maybe don't particularly go to school, and say, you know, I'm here to serve wherever, is there gonna be a system in place where principals can see those volunteers and say, ooh, I need this volunteer over here to do X, Y, and Z, and switch out, and is that also gonna be a space?
So, what, what has happened in the past is usually when a volunteer wants to volunteer, they have expressed interest in working at a specific school, I can tell you, we have a, a current, you know, volunteer candidate, you know, that has, you know, offered services, and, you know, would like to potentially assist in one or two schools, that conversation, although they've reached directly out to me, I need to have that conversation with that s, s, school principal, you know, to see if there is that opportunity, 'cause we also want our, our students to, you know, maximize from this experience, you know, and we want our stu, and we want our volunteers to, you know, give what they can in the area that's like, needed.
Yeah, we've actually had examples where there may not have been something that worked in one elementary school, but yet it was needed in another, and there was communication, and it was executed, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it happens, it's currently happening today.
Do you have essentially, and I don't, I don't even know if this is needed, but a, like, a principal job board, where like, you know, the high school might be looking for people who can help with a certain subject, and maybe you don't have a volunteer yet, but you kind of bank that information?
A job board, no, but I can tell you that we've been contacted, you know, with different, you know, you know, outside community volunteer organizations that, you know, are, are interested in working in our schools, I do know some of our schools have engaged in those conversations also, you know, having a specific job board, we, we don't have that, we are, you know, gonna have, we're actually gonna try to put our volunteer application where all of our job postings are.
Okay.
So that it's extremely visible, but there, that, that's something that I think we could probably discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay, hearing none, this was for information only, Mr. Hushin, thank you for answering our questions, the next item on the agenda is policy KK, school visitor, Mr. Hushin.
Thank you again, so I bring this forward for a first reading, again, this is for information only, and the purpose of bringing this policy forward is to ensure that there is minimal interruption of the learning environment of students, and to ensure the protection of rights, safety, and welfare of students and staff, and, you know, again, I think the timing aligns well with the, the commitment that the board and our administration and staff have made to school safety, I will, the school policy is up, again, the purpose is outlined, similar to, you know, having volunteers in our schools, we also need to ensure that our, that our school principals, you know, know when someone else is coming to visit their school, this needs to be approved by the principal or their designee, again, we need to know what the purpose is, and have the availability of staff to accompany the visitor, again, keeping in mind school safety. Implementation is outlined, now, I do wanna point that... Now, I do want to point that this is updated, this was updated as of this afternoon, so any updates that are in red are different from what you may have seen. Under the implementation, we just added in upon arrival during regular school hours, again, that these folks must report to the school office, sign in, present identification, and obtain a visitor's badge. And again, they will be accompanied to the individual rooms. You'll see at the bottom in red, we just added in guardian next to parent. And at the bottom, in accordance with the law and the statutes, we referenced Sections 26-101 and Section 26-102 of the Education Article, where if there is a disruption in our schools by one of our visitors and the action that can be taken. I do want to point out that in Education Article 26-102, there is a, a reference in there that states how our school staff and administration, et cetera, have the right to ask for any identification while somebody is in our schools. Again, this not only aligns with the law, but is what is taught in Alice training. Just, again, just keeping safety at the forefront inside our school buildings for students and staff.
Walk, walk me through, just walk me through a couple of points on the policy here.
Sure.
I just want to make sure I kind of understand. Let's take it down to line number one, two, three, four, five, six. Principal and designee must have a signed release from the parent and guardian of the student being observed, authorizing the number of visits agreed upon, recorded reviews, and discussion with staff. Help me make sense of what this statement's saying.
There could be an advocate that's coming in to observe a student, and so we need to make sure that the parent is okay with the advocate in there, which would not be a parent or a guardian.
Can we, could we, maybe, because it's kind of broad, and I just don't know what.
It's broad for a reason, because there could be a number of, of scenarios that would fall within this.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I didn't know who, what that was, I thought that was simply saying a parent or guardian would be, you know, that, I, I didn't know it was meant. So even that's the case with an outside agency coming in too? What do we do on days like, you know, say we have, our schools are open for grandparents' day and days like that, are we using the same policy with fidelity then, you know?
That is, that would be something that I believe is, you know, pre-approved, that the principal is fully aware, and as long as they are going through, you know, the sign in, the identification process, you know, typically on those days, there, there are escorts of.
And there would be visitors.
Of, of staffs, that, so, they would fall under a school visitor policy and not volunteer, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I thought this was the school visitor policy.
Right, yes, I, like, I mean, I, I just wasn't sure if, if you were saying, would they fall under a school visitor, or?
No, I, yeah, I said, yeah, would they be considered a school visitor, would they have to go through the whole, you know, I understand checking in, being accompanied to the individual rooms by each principal, and do that, or is it because it's an event they should already know to go, go in? The last part, I, I, I agree with the recording, especially if you're making classroom, unless it's your own child, you know. Wanted to make sure, what happens when a parent, I see a parent or some without, you know, saying, I'm coming? You know, back in the day, you know, when I was a student in this school system, you know, one of the things my grandmother liked to do was pop up visits. I was a difficult child, still am. And she pop up visits and come say, I'm here to view. And, you know, many parents don't want to take the time off work, just, you know, show up on their children, and then we, we say, well, too bad, oops, you didn't say. So what is the, how is the approach going to be when you tell your parent that, sorry, you can't come today? What is that going to look like?
Well, I, I think there's, you know, already a, a checkpoint established, you know, it's not like, you know, when we were back in school where we didn't have the security festival, you know, so they're, you know, they're stopped right there at check-in, you know? They have to state their purpose, you know, and whether it's the school secretary or the school principal who is there, you know, the school principal's gonna have to be, you know, brought in to that conversation.
When, okay, last question, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
When these types of changes occur, so we're, we're changing something, we're going to be changing something in the next month here, what would the dissemination be to our parents and caregivers to know that these changes are in place and that we are now really holding, you know, to, sticking to our ground posts?
Yeah, I, I think that's, you know, a very legitimate question, and I think that's something that we probably need to talk about internally.
So I, I hate to, you know, out of the blue, say, okay, here we're hitting with the po- policy, and then people are like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Sure.
You know, I want, you know, give ground, give time for parents to ask questions.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, that was for information only. Thank you, Mr. Hushen. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Procedure 300-16, Child Physical Abuse, Sexual Abuse, and Neglect.
Thank you. So we just have some, a few updates here. This is the Personnel Procedure that defines the types of abuse and the reporting requirements that we are mandated by law to follow. As you could see, the procedure has not been updated in a while. Since then, there have been some changes in the law, so you will note on the procedure, for example, the definition of what sexual abuse is, is now outlined and included. Just adding language to Section C, citing the law. And, you know, changes are further ahead here in Item Three, stating that the report must be made immediately to Social Services or the appropriate law enforcement agency, which is essentially what is, what is stated in the law. Again, taking you down to the record and the reporting of child abuse, just citing Putting in the good faith report language, which again cited in the laws, specifically the Family Law Article 5704 or 5705. And just what the process, you know, which was already outlined here, would look like if Social Services or law enforcement would need to come in our schools to interview a student. Any questions on any of those changes?
So, okay, I, I see it here. Thank you.
So this is for information only, are there any additional questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hushen.
Wait, one question. So once the form is completed, staff member, whoever puts in the form, the form stays, and then the copies, we, the school system will send the copies to these?
So, or? When we report, we call, and then we fill out a 180 form.
Okay.
That is, that is on file with Social Services.
And so the first step is for the employee to call Social Services, and then notify the principal.
And then we have, and within 48 hours, we need to fill out the form.
Thank you.
How often does this kind of thing happen, that you have to call Social Services?
Well, I can, I think we can give a rough estimate, and I'm not gonna, you know, speak for our school system, but I think in general, there's thousands of these calls that occur statewide.
Each month.
Statewide. You know, and it's, and it's, you know, it's why these laws are in, are in place, and we spend time training our staff on it.
Maryland Department of Human Services has a monthly report about the statistics statewide, and it's broken down by county. I think it's a little bit of a delay, but, you know, like, right now, you'd be able to get probably a temper report numbers, and then they periodically do like a summary of the data. Is that important?
And then what proportion of them bear out that there is abuse?
Less than a third, based on the, I just, just from my memory of looking at, there was the most recent summary of the data, charts and all that, was from 2021 state. And it's less than a third substantiated, and then either unsubstantiated, or I forgot the third, but some, 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 like an unfounded, but less than a third of reports statewide were.
But for adults who are accused of child abuse and they're innocent, kind of wrecks their lives, doesn't it? I mean, how do they get out of that?
They return.
I mean, they get cleared and they return to work.
But I can see how it would be extremely damaging to.
It's just confidential.
Yes.
And, and last question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What happens, say, say, we, I see failure to report, the disciplinary action from our, our superintendent and the board, what happens if a, a teacher does break the confidentiality of this student, and, you know, what, what disciplinary actions will occur then?
Breaking the confidentiality by sharing the incident, you know?
You know, the sharing, the incident has now been shared outside of the room, I, you know, I, you know, I, I've been in these compromising positions before. What, what onus is, if there's any, that they have broken that confidentiality?
I think that would, you know, spark an investigation potentially.
Okay.
But, you know, it's, I guess every situation, you know, would be totally different, so.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, we'll move on. That was for information only, thank you, Mr. Hushen. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Procedure 300-17, Allegations of Child Abuse or Neglect Against a School System Employee.
Yeah, so what this procedure outlines is just some updated language as to what the, what process ensues if a staff member, if these allegations are brought forward against a, a student. And this is really in light of some decisions that have been made by the Attorney General that have clearly deciphered the role of the Board of Ed and law enforcement. And that investigation, when that call is made, law enforcement and/or Social Services will investigate it. We, you know, do not interfere with that investigation. This process is outlined here in all of the new language that is in red. You'll see that some of the old language is, has some strike-throughs through it, and, you know, clearly outlines if a finding is, you know, unsubstantiated, what the role of the local school board has after the outside investigation is complete.
Okay, that was first reading. That was for information only, thank you. The next item on the agenda is Procedure 300-2, Sexual Discrimination and Harassment.
Last one. Sorry. Just some very, very minor changes to the titles and individuals listed in this, in this procedure. Mainly, I want to point you to, I believe it is page three of the procedure. We are taking out the former HR supervisor and who assumed the role of the Title IX Coordinator, Ed Silver, taking his name out, replacing it with mine, as well as the appropriate contact information. And I'll take it a step, the last change was in Section E, where we are taking out the language of the title of Instructional Resource Teacher at the elementary level, and replacing it with principal.
Any questions on this? Okay, this was for information only, so thank you.
Our, our teachers are also trained in how to handle sexual harassment, and, yep, this is one of the mandatory topics that is covered through their Safe Schools Training.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hushen, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Board Handbook Revisions. Dr. Cowsh.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, you have before you a copy of the Board Handbook. Now, we talked about student board member and voting rights and, or at least casting a ceremonial vote, advisory vote, whatever it is you would like to call that, but we said we needed to put it in the handbook. So if you looked on page seven of the handbook.
And I have something I would like to read before we make.
Perfect. Just wanted, oh, yeah, page seven. There we go, in red. The student board member is a non-voting member but has the right to express an opinion, cast a ceremonial vote on all issues discussed in open sessions, except personnel, budget, collective bargaining, and other topics reserved for executive sessions, closed meetings of the county board. This, absent the, the comment about the ceremonial vote, the budget, collective bargaining, all of those were topics that were presented to Delegate Jay Jacobs, who will be presenting the legislation for making those changes in terms of what the student board member is excluded from, and may not attend executive sessions and closed meetings of the county board. is excluded from and may not attend executive sessions and closed meetings of the County Board. So I know that Mr. Wallace had some comments that he wanted to state with regard to this, so.
Yeah, so I would like to request that you strongly reconsider the wording of the SMOB's ability to vote. Previously, I suggested that the SMOB would have what I termed an advisory vote. As a SMOB, I represent the students of KCPS and would, and my vote would advise the Board of Ed on the opinion of the students who I represent. The term ceremonial does not emphasize the importance of the student's voice. Webster's Dictionary defines ceremonial as having no real power or influence. Please reconsider placing emphasis on the importance of the SMOB's voice in making the decision of the Board of Ed. I am not currently asking for voting rights, but simply asking for the SMOB's voting to be considered advisory instead of ceremonial. In September, an 18-year-old student from Boise, Idaho, unseated and incumbent, and became elected member of Boise, Idaho, school board system. A 19-year-old, recent high school graduate, was elected to the school board in New Jersey and beat the incumbent by more than 17%. Please keep in mind that many SMOBs, like myself, already, are already 18 and will be able to vote in for elections. So for now, I am simply asking that SMOB, that the SMOB would be considered an advisory vote and not ceremonial. I also feel that it's important that the SMOB is able to attend closed session if invited by, if invited by the board. I urge you to keep the wording that is previously written so that there is flexibility in the rare occasion that the SMOB needs to be at a closed session. For example, Mr. John Laramore suggested in February, after the stabbing at KCHS, that the board should invite Sam Buckle into the first, into the first few minutes of closed session to discuss the student perspective on the stabbing. Although there may never be a need to invite the SMOB to the closed session, I think that there should be, there should be an option available for that. And that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I don't have any problem with changing the word from ceremonial to advisory.
I don't have any problem with it either.
I don't either, and, and I, I think that, I'm gonna say the same. I don't have a problem changing the ceremonial vote to an advisory vote. I do feel like we need to specifically outline that the SMOB cannot attend closed sessions. And, and it doesn't mean that we wouldn't be able to invite the SMOB to come in to a closed session if there was something that you needed to, to discuss with us. But I think that, I think we need to be firm in keeping that in the description, that they would not be.
Well, in the current, doesn't it have unless invited? So wouldn't that suffice? Like, wouldn't that be good enough? Or would that not?
I don't think so. I think I agree with you.
I think we need to be firm. Be specific, yeah.
You know, this policy is going to be for years, so it's not about a particular student.
Yeah.
Like you, you know, it could be somebody else. But one of the really important things about closed sessions is that they stay closed and that nothing is said outside of them. And I think the whole board could get sued if something that was said in closed session was, got out. And very sensitive issues are discussed in closed session and there has to be, you know, real discretion. And I'm certainly not implying that you wouldn't be discreet, but, but, you know, not, not everyone would. And as far as you're saying, these other people have been elected. I have no problem with, you know, people running for the school board who are only 18 in the community, and that's different. They're, they're elected by taxpayers. Student board members are elected by a small group of high school students, not the whole, you know, not everybody. It's just a few hundred people. But I really think it's important that closed sessions be, be limited to community members who are elected to the school board.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I'm just saying for the, if they're, if the board wanted to invite any student member of the board into, just that it's still available and it's not just like closed out. Because, yeah.
I, I think that we, as a board, could decide to do that without having to alter what's in the procedure.
Okay.
So the ask is to change the verbiage from ceremonial vote to advisory vote and leave the language as written for the remainder of that paragraph. Is that correct? Okay. So, Dr. Couch, do we need another reading on this, or can we, can we vote on this, these changes with that?
With that amendment.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion and vote that way?
Well, I brought it, I brought it as information.
Okay.
Or did I bring it as a vote? Okay.
Yep.
All right, so.
So yes, we, we, the administration is recommending approval of the revisions that obviously will have a change to the Board Handbook. Who would like to make that motion?
I move that we approve the revisions as amended for the Board Handbook.
I'll second.
Do we need to specifically spell out what the revision is?
Determine out the verbiage for changing.
Ceremonial to advisory.
To advisory.
Yes, so to restate the motion, I move that we approve the revision to the Board Handbook, changing the word ceremonial to advisory under the section on the student member of the board.
Okay, we have the motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Sullivan, are you still?
Yes.
Okay, we still have the second from Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to Administrative Services Expenditures Revenue Report. Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, President Gutz, members of the board, Dr. Couch. I'm here tonight to present October's financial statements and our yearly statements through the end of October. So, in total, we'll go through our receipts first. Fund One, we've got a total of 13.3 million so far this year. Fund Three, our school construction fund, we have a total of 1.9, a little over 1.9 million so far this year. For food service, we're at about 690,000, giving us a total through October 31st of just shy of $16 million in receipts this year. Moving down further, we will get into our expense reports. The first one that you'll see here is Fund One. So, in total, we've hit about 75% of our budget for the year for Fund One thus far. Going down further, we will get into Fund Three, which is our school construction fund, which, to give everybody a little bit of background, is still ahead of schedule. We had a meeting last week. They've completed about 75% of the tear-off of the roof for the Kent County High School. So, so we're, of course, we're not going to tell them to slow down. We're going to let them keep on going as much as they can. They are at a point now where they are done tear-off until next summer, though. So there will not be any more potential disruptions or anything like that. The rest of the year, they will be putting most of the metalwork in place and making sure everything that has already been replaced is tied down and fabricated correctly. So, moving on further, we will have our food service fund here. Thus far, we are at about 55% of our budget used up for food service. And our final here will be our restricted funds, which is, you know, a lot of our grant-related expenses. And we are at 26% thus far for this year for fun, for our restricted fund. And then we'll have a little graph here at the bottom for everybody. But does anybody have any questions about any specific funds or any of the amounts?
Any questions? This was for information purposes only. No action was required, so thank you very much, Mr. Kirby. We appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is Policy AC, Non-Discrimination Policy. Dr. Couch.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, you have before you Policy AC, which are the revisions for non-discrimination. This policy was reviewed at the last board meeting and I'm bringing it to you for approval at this meeting.
Okay, the administration is recommending approval of the revisions to Policy AC, Non-Discrimination. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve our non-discrimination policy with all revisions.
Mr. Johnson has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions?
I do have one question. Is this policy included in the student handbook? So it'll need to be updated in the student handbook? Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Policy KDDC, Responsible Use of Social Media and Procedure 300-28.
This is a new policy, Mr. President, members of the board. This is a new policy for responsible use of social media. We reviewed it at the last board meeting and this policy and procedure.
Okay, the administration is recommending approval of Board Policy KDDC and Procedure 300-28, Responsible Use of Social Media. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Are we approving, well, we're just approving the policy, but you attached the procedure with it?
Yes. Because it's new.
Is there a motion? We have no motion?
Without a motion, then it dies.
Yep.
Okay, that is the official action of the board.
Okay.
Okay, the next policy is Policy BCF, Citizen Advisory Committee. Dr. Couch.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, we presented Policy BCF, which is the Citizen Advisory Committee, the revisions that were made to that policy. And you have before you the, the changes that were made and we're recommending approval of Board Policy BCF.
Okay, the administration is recommending approval of revisions to Board Policy BCF, Citizen Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion to approve?
Can I ask a question, or do I have to wait for the motion?
You should wait for the motion.
What if, what if there isn't one?
Oh, yes, then you won't.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we go ahead and take the revisions to the Board Policy BCF.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We do not have a second.
Can I ask my question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so it's a minor thing, but I'm still hung up on the whole, I'm on the student member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. And what is a student in good standing? Remember, Braden, you and I, well, we talked about it and I, and I didn't know if you were going to go ask Ms. Hempstead. Because when I went back and looked at the, I, I like the qualifications for the student member of the board. It was very general. It was a junior or a senior who's attending Kent County High School. Why can't it be something as simple as that?
Ms., I mean, Dr. Couch said that she found them.
Yeah, it was in the student han, it was in the Board Handbook. It was very specific.
Okay.
So, just.
Yeah, and student member of the board is a little bit more specific than just junior and senior. There's also grade and.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah, but, um, correct, you're, you're right. I was using the very general thing. I don't know what a student in good standing is. Can't it just be a Kent County High School student?
That's my feeling as well, and I, I kind of brought that up the last time. I think opening up opportunities for any of our students to participate is what, is the direction I would like to see the Citizens Advisory Committee go. And, and in good standing wasn't in the original. And I, I would just like to offer students a broader opportunity. And that, I mean, that's the only issue that I have with, with this revision.
I, I agree. I don't want it to be, you know, just goody-two-shoes, you know. It might be a student who's quite critical of, of the school or some policy in the school, who wants to be on this committee. We don't ask that the adult citizens are in good standing. We don't do research on them to send the morality police at them or anything. So, you know, I, I think we should get rid of the good standing and, and, you know, be more inclusive of who, who can apply to be on this.
So I think if we're going to do that, then we also have to eliminate the good standing for sports, for players. Because we have students that went through COVID and came out of COVID and had a harder time than others. And we held them off the field and extracurricular activities, that they came from all walks of life, that we basically told them no.
We told them no based on their grades, didn't we?
What is good standing?
Well, that's what I'm asking. What is good standing?
So before, before we go ahead and, and push that, then, then we also have to then consider this for the sports programs as well.
I thought that was sort of state law.
Typically, it would be a 2.0, you know, you'd have to have higher than a 2.0 and not be in attendance failure. So we would say good academic standing, or even to be eligible for sports, you have to have a 2.0.
Well, so, I, I'm, I'm not saying that I agree with this, but instead of using this sort of nebulous description of a student in good standing, maybe we need to be specific the way we are with the student board, student member of the board and say, you know, they have to have a GPA of 2.0 and not be in, you know, messing up with their attendance.
Then we also have to be very specific with the sports players and they, and, and it has to be the same. It's not, and I'll, I'll use the term that no one, it's not equitable to hold certain demographics and groups of people out where we have certain polit, I mean, if, I'm all in favor of defining good standing, but it has to be across the board then. So if, if we're going to have the student board member have a different definition of good standing, and then we, we come ahead and we, we establish a, a second definition of good standing for, for this, and then we have a third definition of good standing for sports. I just, I'm in disagreement of having all of these multiple definitions.
I guess part of what I'm saying is, why do we have to throw the words good standing in there? If you don't throw them in there, then you don't have to worry about a definition.
It wasn't in the original.
I, I think I, I partly following you, but I'll ask Ms. Hempstead. So are there requirements to be in the play? Are there requirements to be in the band? Are there requirements to sing in the choir?
Not to be in the band, not to sing in the choir. Our sports comes out of Bayside.
Yeah, we, we follow the same thing every other high school on the eastern shore does.
No, not in sports, we don't. There are other schools on the eastern shore that actually do not have standards or, or hold them to that, whether it comes out of, out of the Maryland Sports Association or not. It's not the same. QA does not do it, and there are other school systems that do not do it.
I just don't know if their great, if their GPA is the same as ours.
They have to buy by the Bayside.
I understand. I'm just telling you that I'm specifically speaking about football, and that was not the case in other, in other counties on the shore where they, they, and I'm not, I don't have visibility to the details. I know that it wasn't done.
I'm just saying I have a problem with the words good standing, just saying that.
So if you wanted to make a recommendation to approve the policy striking that, then you can make a motion and see if that, if that flies.
Yeah, can that be done now?
We already have a motion on the floor.
But it didn't, no one seconded it, so it died.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the revisions to the Board Policy for Citizens Advisory Committee, with the exception that we amend it and strike the words good standing, talking about the student member of the board.
The student member of the committee.
Student member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, I'm sorry, yeah.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I second.
Motion was by Ms. McGee. Ms. Gail's second was by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We have four ayes and one opposition. The motion passes. I am the opposition. The motion passes as voted upon. The next item on the agenda is the Memorandum of Agreement, MOA, Juvenile Services Educational Program, JSEP.
Okay, hang on, let me get to that.
Sorry, Dr. Couch, I raised right in there.
It's all right. You have before you a copy of the MOU by the JSEP, which is the Juvenile Services Educational Program. It is a MOU that is required of all jurisdictions throughout the state, so I'm requesting your approval of this MOU. We reviewed it during closed session with legal counsel, and the request is to approve the MOU as presented.
Okay, the motion is the administration is recommending approval of the JSEP MOU. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I move that we accept it as presented.
Dr. Costa has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Johnson. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing no, we'll call for the vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Gail? Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processed through available channels. If submitting written testimony, speakers are requested to provide a copy to the President. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the community to address their comments to the Board, it's not an opportunity for dialogue. If you have any questions that need an answer, please contact the superintendent or write a letter to the Board of Education, and a response will be sent back to you. I will be timing the comments at three minutes. At 30 seconds, I will notify you. The first speaker is Tammy Buckle.
Hello, I have two concerns. One is I was hoping that we could add to the agenda sometime for the CAC, for the positions that are vacant, of whether or not they're gonna be filled. I know there was discussion last month by Francois about, having discussion this month about whether or not to fill those vacant spots, but I didn't see it on the agenda, so I was hoping we could add that to the agenda, so we don't have a few months of those spots being vacant. So that's number one. Number two is I want to thank everyone, Dr. Couch, everyone on the Board, for the consideration of adding the smob as a legal member of the Kent County Board of Education. The only thing that I would like to request is, last month, there was discussion about the student member of the Board, and it was actually put as an item for discussion to talk about the student member of the Board to propose legislation to Jay Jacob. There was never really an opportunity for any kind of public discussion. It was then turned into an action item that was then given to Jay, so it didn't really have any opportunity for public discussion. So it was presented in the agenda as an information only last month by Dr. Couch, but then it was actually, the proposed legislation was then voted on. So in the future, if you could just give chance for the public to have a comment on that. That's it.
Okay, the next speaker is Valerie Walters.
Just the last paragraph. Opponents of transparency and the teachers' union tell us that we need to trust teachers, they are experts, and as a comparison, I want you to think about this. The state of Maryland is getting ready to build a new Bay Bridge in the near future. This process is under constant public scrutiny as the site is selected and the bridge and other infrastructure is designed. Imagine if the state said, we need to trust the Maryland Transportation Authority, they are the experts, and then told citizens they could not see nor comment on these plans. The uproar would be deafening. People demand transparency and input into things like building a bridge, but are supposed to leave the education of their children to teachers without transparency? I don't think so. Children are much more precious than bridges. Furthermore, what's in our school libraries, how about this one? Fingers far more effective than a penis in many ways. A hand can do the job of five penises. When gay women refer to having sex, this is usually what they mean. Lesbians can stimulate the clitoris and vagina. Next book. In between men come, they crush my bones with their weight, they split me open, then they disappear. I cannot tell which one of the things they do to me are real. Next one. Asat knelt behind Hassan, put his hands on Hassan's hips and lifted his bare buttocks. He kept one hand on his back and undid his own belt buckle with his free hand. He unzipped his jeans, dropped his underwear, and positioned himself behind him. Hassan didn't even struggle, he didn't even whimper. You, look at me when I'm talking to you, the soldier barked. He handed his cigarette to the guy next to him, made a circle, poked it in and out, in and out. I knew your mother, did you know that? I know her real good. I took her from behind that creek over there. What a little sugary cunt she had. I pretended I hadn't seen the dark stain in the seat of his pants, or those tiny drops that fell from between his legs and stained the snow black. You think that's acceptable? You might read that at home at your house, which might explain things. That's not acceptable in 99.9 percent of households, not middle school, not high school. Clean it up. You can do better. Our kids deserve better. This is child abuse. This is pornography. I don't care what you say. And these books are in the middle school and in the high school. Half of them can be found on the library websites, and the other half, you actually have to go in there and pick them up, and I have the pictures showing it.
30 seconds.
What's a libel back in the school?
Ms. Doggus, Amy Doggus.
I want to go back to where Mr. Getz was referring to, the good standing. My son, last year, was a not-good-standing student, so he was not able to participate in a sport. This past week, a middle school student who is repeatedly in detention was allowed to take a field trip with the middle school, and he was not in good standing. There has to be something out there that says across the board what good standing is. It's not fair, say, my son doesn't have good grades, he can't play a sport, but then so-and-so comes along, oh, he can go on the field trip because he's what everybody thinks is allowed to, and nobody's gonna notice it. There's got to be something across the board. It can't just be for what sport or what Braden's doing. I mean, it's ridiculous. It's all the time. It's never a consistent thing. And it's not just in sports, it's throughout the whole school system. There is never a consistency. You know, you have students that are in daily detention. Oh, they get rewarded to go on a field trip. You know, it's not fair to the students that are actually there trying to do their best. And it's something needs to be, you know, whether it's not necessarily good standing, but something needs to be put in perspective that this is what Kent County Schools is requiring for any participation in anything. I mean, it's not fair. Band members don't have this, but sports, they do. And so when it comes to sports time, you have half the students that can't do it, but yet you have a full band, and they're not even be held accountable like the students with the sports. It's not fair. Band members should have to qualify just like a sports athlete does. Every person, every student should have to follow the same qualifications to participate in any sport or any activity in Kent County public schools. It's not fair. You have students that are doing their best, tutoring, whatever, and they have to wait half a sports season to get back out on a field, but yet you have band members that are failing participating in the band. It's not fair. Something needs to be standardized for participation in all Kent County activities.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a notification of our next meeting. The next meeting of the Board of Education of Kent County will be held on Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, beginning at 5:30 PM with the open session. There will be no closed session. This meeting will be located at the Administrative Building in the Boardroom, this room located at 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland 21661. And that's time for me to adjourn. The last item on the agenda...
I thought it was not Monday?
No.
Move to Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, remember?
My birthday's on Monday, so I was gonna come in. All right, thank you.
The last item on the agenda is the administration is recommending approval to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Mr. Johnson has the motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. McGee. Any further comments or questions? Hearing no, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes, the meeting is adjourned at 9:00.